In, roll call please for attendance and quorum.
Erickson, here is Whit.
Here.
Arnold.
Here.
Here.
Here. We do have a quorum. If you'd now rise for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Are there any agenda deletions or corrections to note? Seeing none. Our first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be enacted under one motion. Meeting minutes to approve. September sixteen, two thousand twenty-five, board meeting. September sixteen, two thousand twenty-five, special meeting canvas. September sixteen, two thousand twenty-five, work session. September twenty-three, two thousand twenty-five, special meeting canvas. September twenty-three, two thousand twenty-five, work session. B, approved payroll removal, Madison Smith, summer legal assistant county attorney, effective September twelve, two thousand twenty-five. C, approved payroll removal, Dustin George, equipment operator one, secondary roads, effective nine twenty-six, two thousand twenty-five. D, receive and file payroll removals approved by the conservation board for the following seasonal conservation aids. A, Owen Heiser, effective eight-eight, two thousand twenty-five. B, Reagan Fitch, effective eight-fifteen, two thousand twenty-five. C, Monty Freeman, effective nine-thirty, two thousand twenty-five. D, Vicki Morton, effective nine-thirty, two thousand twenty-five. E, approved new hire Bryce Houston, mechanic, secondary roads, effective October six, two thousand twenty-five. F, approved new hire Shelby Goode, collections assistant, county attorney, effective October eight, two thousand twenty-five. G, approved seasonal employee, Jack Eicholtz, summer intern. I think that's, probably should be corrected, end of the term or end employment, summer intern? Okay. Approved seasonal employee, Jack Eicholtz, summer intern zoning, effective ten-six, two thousand twenty-five. H, receive and file new hire approved by the assessor, Seth Posma, praiser, deputy assessor, effect- effective September nine, two thousand twenty-five. I, approved wage change, Ellie Phillips, collections assistant, county attorney, effective ten-one, two thousand twenty-five. J, approved step increase, Josh Mosher, mechanic, secondary roads, effective ten-five, twenty-five. K, approved step increase, Garrett George, equipment operator one, secondary roads, effective ten-seventeen, twenty-five. L, approved two thousand twenty-six Warren County Wellness Points List. M, approved Class C retail alcohol license for Carper Family Winery at forty-six oh three Dakota Street, Norwalk. N, approved retail tobacco license for Dollar General at ten thirty-five G fifty Highway Saint Charles. O, set public hearing regarding the proposed plans and specifications of the Warren County Secondary Roads Sprinkler System Project for October twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five at six oh five P M. P, set a public hearing for Jewel Street Road Vacation. S twenty-six, T seventy-six, N R twenty-two W for October twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five at six-ten P M. Q, set a public hearing to consider approval of Chapter twenty-five regulating temporary residential use of campers and recreational vehicles on private property in Warren County. Prend's camper and RV ordinance for six fifteen P M, October twenty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Second reading hearing, nine forty-five A M, November six, two thousand twenty-five, and third reading hearing, six oh five P M, November eighteen, two thousand twenty-five. Lastly, R, set a public hearing to repeal and replace chapters forty-one, excuse me, forty, forty-one, forty-two, forty-three, and forty-six of the Warren County zoning ordinances for nine-thirty A M, November six, two thousand twenty-five, second reading hearing, six P M, November twelve, two thousand twenty-five, and third reading hearing, six P M, November eighteen, two thousand twenty-five. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
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 Aye. The motion carries. Consent agenda is approved. Second item on our agenda are claims. We have claims in the amount of three hundred thirty-five thousand, seven hundred twenty-six dollars and ninety-nine cents. Do I have a motion on approving and accepting the claims?
Make a motion to approve the claims.
Second.
Discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold.
Aye.
McIntyre.
Aye.
Aye. Claims are approved. Number three, consider application to use the Warren County Justice Center grounds for wine, witches, and brews on Friday, October twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five, with possible action.
I'll make a motion to approve the application for the use of the Warren County Justice Center grounds for wine, witches, and brews on Friday, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five.
You want the-
Oh, also with the addition of waiving the fee.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have board discussion? Just have a quick question. Is this year two or three?
Oh, no, this is like year five or something.
Wow.
Ten? Ten. Yeah, this is, this one's been reoccurring. It's very successful.
Wow.
Wonderful. Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. Roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number four is consider first addendum to development agreement by and between Warren County and the City of Indianola with possible action.
So this was just to extend their six months, correct, that they had asked for, that we agreed to? This is to extend that so they can stay until December thirty-first, twenty twenty-eight?
And for the public's benefit, just the basis on that was we stayed a bit longer at the shop site. That was in the land swap deal of a couple of years ago. And to true things up, we are now accordingly offering the same provision of a six-month extension on the library.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Okay, roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number five, consider engagement of review for employee handbook with possible action. Good morning.
So this is just an agreement so we can work with Allers and Cooney on updating our personnel policy. We had put it in our budget to complete this, so this is just starting the process with them.
Great. Great.
This has taken a while to get going. I remember talking about this in like January or something.
Yeah, so I've worked with a bunch of the other department heads on getting notes from them on things they want to see. So we went back and I've been putting all of it together and this is kind of just getting the process started with them. So we budgeted for five thousand. It's going to be a flat three thousand dollar fee to do this. So once we, if you guys approve this, we can send it off to them with the notes that we have and then we can bring it back to you guys with any updates and changes we want to look at.
Sounds great. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the engagement of review for employee handbook with Allers and Coonies.
Second. Discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. Number six is considering the following request to hire with possible action. Engineers request for an equipment operator one in secondary roads department, followed by treasures request to hire for an additional person.
Our request is to fill a position that just vacated, so not to add any new position, just to fill an empty one that we just had an employee resign, so.
Great. And then I, I asked for this treasures one to be added to the agenda. I don't know if Andrea has anything, but this is definitely within her budget. It's just dealing with some employees that are out temporarily.
Hello. So I just wanted to, because I know I've talked to pretty much every board member, either in a work session or separately. I just want to go through quickly kind of what's happened in my office this year, just so everybody knows, even the public, because I know they're being impacted a lot by it. So today I'm requesting an additional position to be added for a driver's license specialist. Kind of what's transpired is I had our deputy unexpectedly retire April seventeenth, which kind of left the leadership down there open. So what I did is I moved a motor vehicle specialist over that had just been trained to help fill that gap. Then at the end of May, I had an additional driver's license specialist go out on extended leave. At this point, I do not have any expected return date. So what I chose to do then is the motor vehicle specialist that I sent down there in April is still serving down there. I myself, sometimes you will come in, I will be down there issuing. I decided to also send another motor vehicle specialist through training, so then there's another one down there now. However, in any day now, I'm going to have a motor vehicle specialist go out on maternity leave. So that is going to, yes, I love having people crash trained that they can jump back and forth, but the biggest thing is, is I want to get D L appointments in here as quickly as possible, but we also have to maintain our motor vehicle standards and make sure we're getting the mail and everything processed. Just some of the numbers, which I was amazed when I ran these. I know Erin and I have talked a lot about the out-of-county residents coming to Warren County, especially for driver's license. This year alone, thirty-two percent of our drivers license issued have been out-of-county residents. We are required by the state of Iowa to serve anybody that comes into this building, and that is now for motor vehicle and driver's license. So we're getting a lot of people from other counties on both sides. We charge the ten-dollar out-of-county resident fee if they do not own property in Warren County. We have had twenty-nine thousand in revenue so far for that this year. And that's since January, so not fiscal year. I just want to end with, one of my biggest concerns right now is burnout of my employees. That really just says it. I just want to make sure that we're still able to provide the best service we can, and I just want to make sure the employees and citizens are getting treated the way they should be. So I'm asking just for one more position.
I agree. I hate anytime you go down there, the hallway, I mean, you got a lot of patients down there. I've seen Andrea the last couple of weeks sitting at a desk. She's not in her office. She's doing the work, so. And I think this is what the residents expect, is to be able to get in timely manner. So thank you for all you're doing.
I'm supportive as well.
I would make a motion to approve both of these positions.
Second.
Discussion from the board?
Full time.
They're full. One, I have the secondary roads backfill position that that's super easy. The treasure is one, considering the circumstances, also pretty easy for me at this point. It's not my goal to add, add additional staff. I think we made that pretty clear in the budget talks earlier this year. Here, though, with extended out-of-office, another maternity leave, and how busy you are, like it just makes a lot of sense to me to, to get that filled. I, I also wasn't aware of the thirty-two percent of out-of-county, like there's, there seems like there's a little bit of a disconnect with some of the public saying like, well, why can't I get in? Or it takes a long time, or, you know, whatever. And what they're not, what they're not understanding is we're capped. I, I would, I would make it a hundred bucks if the state allowed us to charge out-of-county people to use our facilities. They don't pay any taxes here. They don't contribute to the pot. Fortunately, we can't do that. So it's ten dollars, and by my math, you said you've raised twenty-nine thousand year-to-date from out-of-count, and those are appointments that are pushing Warren County citizens back. And, and for that, we do collect an additional ten dollars, but whoop-dee-doo, that's not a lot of money. It's certainly not inconvenient enough for someone from Polk or Madison or Clark or Marion or someone else to drive over here where their, their offices aren't filling positions and they just know it's going to be quicker, so they do it, but it does certainly inconvenience our constituents and our actual residents who contribute to Warren County. So twenty-nine thousand divided by ten is a lot of appointments, folks. That's a lot. So, yeah, I'm good with it. We got a motion. We got a second. Who seconded it?
Crystal.
Okay. Roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. All right, number seven, consider approval of contract ID ninety-one, C zero ninety-one dash one-three-seven for bridge replacement. P P C B on County Highway R fifty-seven over the North River, just south of Norwalk, with possible action.
So we had the letting last month. Engineers estimate for this project was just under two-point-five million. We got five bidders. I won't read everyone, but they ranged from the low bid, Herbert Construction, two million, about thirty-two thousand dollars. And the high bid was just about two-point-four million. So they were all under our engineers estimate. Looks like bridge prices are going down. As you might recall, this is the project we got one-point-six million dollars in earmark funds from Cindy Axny when she was still representative. We got it to letting basically in the eleventh hour with getting our easements done, so.
I remember this one very well.
Yes. You worked with me a lot on this one. I appreciate it, so. This is, this is that project, and we recommend approval as part of this resolution. You're also giving me the authority to sign the contract and Doc Express and do those things. Questions?
What is the farm-to-market dollar component? How does the fund look? I don't remember offhand, but it's going to be a lot less than what we anticipated for farm-to-market dollars.
Yeah, we'll be using, we'll be using five hundred thousand in farm market. There may be some, there's already certain things we may want to change order and do it to make it better, but it's still well below our engineers estimate. It looks like bridge prices have started to settle off. Few years ago, they skyrocketed up in one month, so that's a positive sign.
Good. And just for the public's benefit, this bridge is, for as busy as this bridge is, it is, it's a rough one. It's a, it, it's a-
Very narrow.
Really narrow, and when it rains or snows, especially snows, and you meet someone on the bridge, and I mean, there's people that drive large SUVs or trucks. There's just not a lot of room. It's tight and it's super old, so I'm-
I pretty much closed my eyes when I dragged my crane truck across it.
You're, you're hoping that no one's on the bridge when you're on the bridge, because it's old, it's weight limited or restricted at this point. It's, it's in terrible shape and it is highly used, so.
Very good one to replace.
It is a good one to replace.
Super excited to see that a Warren County company is, got the bid and, and running with it.
I was happy to see five bids. We normally get one or two, but it's because when you have a company that's in the county, they can mobilize a lot cheaper, so.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, if you look at the spread on the bids, it's about a half million dollars, too. That's the benefit of having five bidders on a large project versus one or two.
And we have another letting coming up this month, so for another bridge, so hopefully the trend stays good.
Yep. Get them all to bid. Love it. All right. Do we have a-
I'll make a motion to approve contract ID number ninety-one dash C zero nine-one dash one-three-seven for the bridge replacement on R fifty-seven just south of Norwalk.
Second. Discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number eight, public hearing to consider repeal of Chapter Four, prohibition against the acceptance of gifts by county officials, county employees, and their dependent family members. Warren County Code of Ordinances as adopted on September seven, two thousand twenty-one, and adopted, and adopt the revised Chapter Four. At this point, I'll make a motion to go into public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
Whit.
Aye.
Arnold.
Aye.
Aye. We're in public hearing. Good morning, Dawn.
Good morning. We have four ordinances that I'm bringing to you this morning. We've made some updates to them. This is all part of getting ready to recodify the Warren County Code of Ordinances at the end of the year. We're at the beginning of next. However that works out, we're going to start with Chapter Four this morning. As Erin read, this is about Government Ethics and Lobbying Act. That's what it used to be. It is now the prohibition against the acceptance of gifts by county officials, county employees, and their dependent family members. What I did was I worked with the, worked on it with the Iowa code in my, right next to me, so we made sure that ours dovetails with the Iowa code. That's why we changed things in this particular ordinance. I do have a proposed resolution that I'm happy to read. Keep in mind that the board is able to waive the second and third readings should they choose to do so.
We are in public comment. Is there anyone from the public or online who would like to make a comment about prohibition of county officials, employees, and their dependent families receiving gifts? Seeing none at this point, I'll make a motion to close our public comment.
Second.
And a second from Crystal. Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay. Do we have a motion waiving second, third for revised Chapter Four?
Would you like me to read the resolution first?
Yes.
Yes, please.
Okay. Be it resolved that the Warren County Board of Supervisors hereby repeals Chapter Four, prohibition against the acceptance of gifts by county officials, county employees, and their dependent family members, effective December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and hereby adopts revised Chapter Four, prohibition against acceptance of gifts by county officials, county employees, their family, and their family dependent, their dependent family members of the Warren County Code of Ordinances, effective January first, twenty twenty-six.
I'll make a motion on that, waiving also the second and third readings of that.
Second.
Discussion from the board?
Thank you, Dawn. We're going to get through these before you retire, just so you know.
Just for the public's benefit, this is three-dollar limitation? Is that what that is?
Yes.
Three dollars or less. Okay. Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries. It is adopted. Number nine, I'll make a motion to go into public hearing to consider the repeal of Chapter Sixteen, Procedure for Utility Installation Permits, Warren County Code of Ordinances as adopted October nineteen, two thousand twenty-one, and adopt the revised Chapter Sixteen.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
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 Aye. We're in public hearing.
The ordinance itself is about how we deal with the procedure for utility installation permits out of the engineer's office. What we did was clarify some of the language regarding the powers of the Board of Supervisors and the county engineer to administer those two sections within this ordinance. It's just a clarification. It makes it easier to understand for us and the public and the utilities. That is the only change we've made in this particular ordinance.
Thank you. All right, we're in public, uh, public hearing. Is there any comments from the public? At this point, I'll make a motion to end our public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold.
Aye.
Aye. Dawn, if you would be so kind as to read the revised.
Be it resolved that the Warren County Board of Supervisors hereby repeals Chapter Sixteen, Procedure for Utility Installation Permits, effective December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and hereby adopts revised Chapter Sixteen, Procedure for Utility Installation Permits of the Warren County Code of Ordinances, effective January one, twenty twenty-six.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised Chapter Sixteen and waive second and third reading.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number ten, at this point, I'll make a motion to go into public hearing to consider the repeal of Chapter Seventeen, unauthorized use of secondary road right-of-way Warren County Code of Ordinances as adopted October nineteen, two thousand twenty-one, and adopt the revised Chapter Seventeen. Do we have a second to go into public hearing?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold.
Aye.
Aye. We're in public hearing.
Chapter seventeen deals with unauthorized use of secondary road right-of-way. We sometimes have residents build things within the right-of-way, and we cannot have that because it's dangerous when we're trying to take care of the roads, either to plow or to grade. So we, we modified the, to clarify this offenses and penalties section of this particular ordinance. Pursuant to Chapter Two of the Warren County Code of Ordinances, we will follow that when we need to cite somebody for civil penalty. Chapter Six is the chapter that deals with the illegal dumping. It has its own penalties associated with it. And then we wanted to clarify that each twenty-four-hour period following the removal deadline of something that's in the right-of-way, that can, that constitutes a separate and distinct offense, and that's just all within that section of penalties within this chapter.
Okay. We are in public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to comment? Seeing none, I will make a motion to end the public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold.
Aye.
Aye. Board discussion? None. Does the board have a motion?
May I read the resolution for you? Be it resolved that the Warren County Board of Supervisors hereby appeals Chapter Seventeen, unauthorized use of secondary road right-of-way, effective December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and hereby adopts the revised Chapter Seventeen, unauthorized use of secondary road right-of-way of the Warren County Code of Ordinances, effective January first, twenty twenty-six.
I guess I do have just a little bit of a comment, just for the public, that this includes like mailboxes and stuff like that. We've got a lot of nice houses going up in certain areas that they put those big stone mailboxes right on the side of the road, and this includes stuff like that. But other than that, I will make a motion to approve the repeal of Chapter Seventeen.
And adopt the revised.
Adopt the revised Chapter Seventeen.
Do you also want to waive the second, third reading?
Or second, third readings. Sorry.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion from the board? Dawn, can you explain what the revised seventeen looks like regarding mailboxes?
We did not change anything regarding the mailboxes.
It stays the same. Okay. Uh, motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Erickson.
Aye.
Aye.
Arnold.
McIntyre.
Aye. Aye. Motion carries. Number eleven, I'll make a motion to go back into public hearing to consider the repeal of Chapter Nineteen, driveway entrances, Warren County Code of Ordinances as adopted on October nineteen, two thousand- nineteen, two thousand twenty-one, and adopt the revised chapter nineteen. Do I have a second to go into public hearing?
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Whit?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We're in public hearing.
We have revised chapter nineteen to clarify the driveway application process, approval of the driveway by the county engineer, and assignment of nine-one-one addresses. It's just the process that we follow and we want residents to follow to make sure we get everything done. Driveways in the right place, driveways built, address happens. We also have increased the fees. New driveway with address, the fee went up from a hundred to a hundred and fifty dollars. Field entrance went up from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars. Field entrance converting to driveway with address went up fifty dollars, from fifty dollars to a hundred dollars, and then widen the existing entrance went up from twenty-five to fifty dollars. And that's for the fee schedule for the permit.
Understood. All right.
May I add one more thing? I want to say I worked with county engineer Tim Hill on this, and he's been great to work with on trying to update these ordinances as we go along. And I appreciate it.
Thank you, Dawn. Nice job, Tim. All right. We are in public hearing. Is there anyone from the public who would like to make a comment? Seeing none at this point, I'll make a motion to end our public hearing.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
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 Aye. Dawn, if you would kindly read the revised chapter nineteen or the resolution?
Be it resolved that the Warren County Board of Supervisors hereby appeals chapter nineteen driveway entrances effective December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, and hereby adopts revised chapter nineteen driveway entrances of the Warren County Code of Ordinances effective January first, two thousand twenty-six.
I'll make a motion to adopt the revised chapter nineteen.
Second.
Do you want to waive the second and third reading?
And waive second and third.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any board discussion?
Dawn, just to clarify, this did also take out the, if a property owner puts in a bridge that the county assumes ownership of that bridge?
That is, that also is gone.
Okay.
Well done. All right. Motion and a second. Any board discussion? Further board discussion? Seeing none, a roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Whit?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye. The motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dawn, for the work on this. All right. Number twelve is consider auditors' request to donate unused and older chairs with possible action.
I just wanted to approach the board in regards to, there's about thirty, thirty-five chairs that used to be in this room that we used prior that didn't make it into the auction. They're very outdated in their style and their colors, different things, but I feel that they're still fairly sturdy. I don't know what kind of value they would have on it, but I would like to maybe donate that to a nonprofit, maybe such as Relift, because they do employment type of education and stuff. I have reached out to them. I just haven't gotten an answer back, so I'm trying to be a little bit proactive. If that's something that they can't use, maybe I can donate them to the school or the church or something like that.
That's great.
Yeah, I think anything that we can repurpose or use if there's not a lot of value there, minimal value there, then it's better than ending up in the landfill anyhow, so. I'd be supportive.
Absolutely.
Hundred percent. I, and just a note for the public, if you do have, you know, not wanting to bombard the, like, the veterans' office and stuff, but we have a lot of, a lot of nonprofits or assistance here in the county that they would very much be willing to at least take a look at it and see if anybody else could use it.
I'll make a motion to approve the auditor's request to donate unused and older chairs as described.
Second.
Any thoughts? Any additional thoughts? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Whit?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number thirteen is receive and file reports, the following reports, A through D, fiscal year twenty-five county annual financial report from Kayakota Humane Society, B, the Humane Society, C, Sheriff's Office Quarterly Report, and D, Veteran Affairs.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the report from Kayakota Sheriff's Office and Veterans Affairs.
Second.
Any more discussion? Roll call, please.
Erickson?
Aye.
Whit?
Aye.
Arnold?
Aye.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Number fourteen, supervisors' report. Would anyone like to share?
I'd like to thank the IT team for getting rid of those big screens that were blocking our faces.
Yes.
I think it was quite surprising. Last night I noticed it, so thanks to the IT team for that.
Can you see us better, Marilyn?
I feel like, I feel like you could see us better, right?
But I hid behind my screen. That's why it was up.
Now he can't put his head down on the table and go to sleep.
They appear to be working better as well. As I say that, they went black. Okay, all right.
That one's on the jinx. I'll give a quick update. I did attend a Warren County Economic Development meeting last week. It was actually hosted at Norwalk City Hall. And it was a productive meeting. They discussed a great deal about future annexation and items that should be on their way to the county in the event that those things pass. I think they might even pivot a little bit on the annexation to do a three-hundred acre within the twenty-nine-hundred acre annexation that has a hundred percent approval. And so I would certainly expect that some additional large-scale development is coming. And that's frankly really beneficial for everyone in the county for a variety of reasons and the school. But, you know, I think that it's been pretty clear this year that people are frustrated at the property tax situation. And so I would certainly guess that the legislature, who did not take that up formally last year, the next year is going to be an election year. And so I would say smart money is going to have something come out of the Iowa Legislature regarding property taxes. But what I think we heard is one of the taxing entities, in addition to the schools in your cities, I always like to remind folks that the county also makes up the smallest portion of the three main taxing entities, although our name is on your tax statement, and so we seem to catch a disproportionate amount of frustration from you. But nonetheless, we're still the smallest. But what I've heard was that a lot of people are very frustrated with the amount of property taxes in some or the valuation increases with anticipated future tax rates. And some of that's going to be up in the air based on the rollback and the, what the state will do with caps for those entities. But, long story short, if you actually want property tax relief and you also want some level of services, like you saw the treasurer explain why we needed an employee today, if you actually want services and fire and police and gravel and things, those things cost money and it has to come from somewhere. In my estimation, the best way to actually do property tax relief is to grow through some commercial and industrial tax base because there's not a residential rollback. They're also usually pretty big hitters when it comes to actual amounts paid. And so from your perspective, adding commercial and adding industrial valuation to the county is a humongous win for you. If you couple that with what the state did on a prior house file and what I think they're going to do next year, if they restrict the taxing entities on how much they can actually levy, but your pot grows a whole lot with some really large industrial and commercial development, you're going to actually feel reduction, which is what I think people want to see. Because at the end of the day, I think most people in the public, they really look at their tax statement and said, well, last year I paid twenty-five-hundred-seventy-two dollars, and next year it says I should pay twenty-eight-hundred dollars. What they want to see is twenty-five-seventy-two to twenty-four or something that stays flat or down. And the only way that you can realistically do that with raises, with the costs of inflation increasing things, is to add to the pot. And I will tell you, the economic development team and some of that annexation stuff, like, it's going to hit, so fingers crossed. But that was my report. It was a good meeting.
I don't necessarily have a report besides just kind of filling the public in on one of the things that we approved today, and that's the R fifty-seven bridge over North River, south of Norwalk. Just want to give some accolades to Erin. He did an absolutely fantastic job getting that thing pushed through to the point where we could receive that federal funding. Like Tim said, it was right at the midnight hour that it all got taken care of, but just running the numbers on that, I mean, that's theoretically, we're only paying four-hundred-and-thirty-two-thousand out of farm-to-market money for that almost two, well, over two-million-dollar bridge. So, thanks, Erin.
Appreciate you.
I have one thing. Last week, I traveled to Waterloo for forty-eight hours to partake in their Main Street workshop, and I got to meet with some elected leaders from cities and counties and get some ideas of ways that they are building relationships with their other partners and growing to be prosperous together. So that's exciting. I don't know how we're going to implement it all yet, but there's a lot to learn.
Okay. Number fifteen is public input. Comments will be limited to three minutes per individual. The board's not going to take any action on the comments due to the requirements of the open meetings law, but may do so in the future. And just to be frank with you, we really do. When someone comes up and takes time out of their day or comes online and tells us something that's on their mind, it doesn't just end there. Like, I think the five of us reflect on it some, and those comments frequently show back up in a work session. I mean, I'm not going to say every comment does. Some comments maybe make a little more sense of things that we can do or control, others don't, but we actually do listen, so if anyone has a comment, we'll hear you.
Such as the screens. Marilyn felt the screens were obstructive and it was hard to hear. We've listened, Marilyn, and we fixed our Zoom, which we needed to fix.
The floor is yours.